Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Joy, would you please call the roll?
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Counsel, are there any additions to the seating agenda before we go to consent agenda? Now, we'll move to consent agenda. We have approval of minutes from the June 22 meeting. We have approval of a park use permit. Mike, I'm just gonna ask you, explain why that's coming for the council.
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor. So, the park use permit, staff would like to bring uses of parks that, not necessarily controversial, but may, it may come to the attention of the police department, specifically regarding violations of our noise ordinance or other matters similar to that. So, we bring it to the council for their approval, just to give our police officers responding to those calls some authority to say, yes, this has been in front of the council, it's received their blessing, they've approved this event. It just makes their job a little easier. So, we'd like to bring these types of park uses to the attention of the council in the future.
Okay, thanks, Mike. And as you know, counsel, generally, we see permission to close streets or something that will involve the streets. This is a little bit different. These are generally approved at the parking rec level, so those will come before us in the future. We also have a resolution of employment for Rhonda Runyon, the wastewater department. We have a promotion in the water department, Steve Redger. Steve, are you here tonight?
No.
Okay, great. So, our new water superintendent. And also, resolution of employment in parking recreation for Mitchell Taglauer. We have claims in the amount of $743,980.87. So, entertain a motion to approve those consent agenda items.
Move to approve.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Rasmussen. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Thank you. And Steve, I know we had you bunched in with some other things in the consent agenda item, but we want to offer our congratulations and our confidence that you'll continue to run our treatment plant and all the water operations with great professionalism.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, counsel, we have a request for public appearance regarding a North Main Street bike rec. Is Rachel Cannon here? Okay, Rachel?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Yes, I'm here tonight because it would be nice if the city could remove the bicycle rack in front of my building, 110 North Main Street, which is across the alley from Revelations. I'm asking that because not long ago, I asked the city to remove the bicycle rack for, because I was painting, I need to paint my building. It has been a real challenge to have it removed, you know. I had to go here, I had to go to the street department, I had to go to the police department. No one could help, because the bicycle, we're attached to the bicycle rack, and no one could take that responsibility. So, I put note, the street department said, well, maybe you can put note on bicycle, and then if people remove them, then we could, we would be able to help you. Finally, it happened after a while. And to tell the truth, I did not have in mind to have it removed. I thought they will bring it back, which, I think it's Darrell, the head of the street department, he said, okay, we take it out, but we will bring it back. I said, okay. And then finally, I thought, gosh, it's really look much more beautiful without this in front of my building. And it used to be in front of the flowers, the green, which is beautiful. We even cannot see them. I'm sorry, but the bicycle rack is, is not very a well-designed one. In other word, it damaged bicycle a lot. And the bicycle, it cannot stay straight in the bicycle rack, because the space between the iron rod is too wide. And the bicycle, you put the front wheel in it, and there is so much gap, that the bicycle goes that way, left, right, you know, as it can. And at some point, it always go on the ground, you know. And then, if you're like me, your front wheel does not, you know, go really straight any longer, it is damaged. So, I don't know, but that may be not really the purpose. But now, I have, I don't know if there is someone here from the...
Yes, Darrell. Darrell is here. And I think, Darrell, you have moved the bike rack, correct?
Yes, it's at the old Walker building.
Which building?
The old Walker building, the...
Tribune building, yeah.
Tribune building.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
So, it's there now. But the intention is to bring it back once the painting is done? Or is that, you're open to, you'll put it where you're told?
I did not say to bring it back.
Okay. It's not on the space of the building, on the, on the space, it's on the side of it somewhere?
Kind of where the entrance was, slightly off the sidewalk.
Okay.
Not quite on the slab. It actually fits in there nicely.
Maybe leave it there.
Yeah. Yeah, I saw that today. My concern about, my concern about where it is now is that the bikes themselves are chained to the, to the west side of it, which is on Ross Walker's property. I'm not sure he's aware of that, and I'm not sure what the liability is of that, so, and I don't know how we prevent that if it's kept in that spot either. So, I'm not sure whether we'd be able to keep it there or not, because those bicycles really shouldn't be on private property.
I know, he said, he said it's the city property, and I understand that you can put the bicycle rack there.
So, you would be okay if we brought it back once your painting is done?
Well, it's not beautiful, and also, there is not enough space. There are a lot of people going through here, and...
Well, it's, your main objection that you approached the council with was about the obstruction to your painting. So, once your painting...
Right.
When do you anticipate having that big scaffold down from your painting?
Well, around maybe mid-August, if the weather cooperate.
Mid-August, okay.
Yes. The weather is not really doing too good, you know, it's keep raining, it's not good for painting.
Well, and you also say here, your tenants do not like it.
It's true.
There.
But I thought someone was supposed to come, you know, but there is no one from the information center. They said they would send someone here, because they don't, they would prefer not to have a bicycle rack in front of the building. It's just in front of their door, you know. And I know it's a city property, but I was thinking, it has been there for so long, maybe we could take turns, you know, it could be another place, you know, and then maybe at some point, it can come back, but...
Okay. Well, counsel, for tonight, then, since this has really been remedied as far as the obstruction for the painting, is that as much action as you want to be concerned about this evening? Well, I would encourage you to have Darrell, you know, make sure where it is it could stay, or if it can't, to consider alternative places to put it. I kind of agree that it's not fair that it's always in front of one place the whole time. Although, you know, I didn't think you're...
Although, where you put it.
Not in my backyard is a very popular theme. And then, we're also gonna have bicyclists coming before the council, saying, I want to park my bike in the middle. I agree, we should have it, but... I think we, we want to have them.
It was mostly, it was mostly there, though, for Cafe Paradiso, right?
No, this one's closer, this one's closer to Revelations.
There is one by Cafe Paradiso.
Yeah, there's one.
A big one like this, but this business is on the opposite side of the street?
But not that far away.
Right, Revelations.
So, maybe we move it down by the convention center, where there's a little more space.
Yeah? We can, we can look for more space, we can look, take a...
Look for the courthouse.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The council now will move to our action items and ordinances. The first before you is a resolution approving a tax abatement application for Cynthia Reese. This is a new home valued at $200,000. Cynthia's here this evening. And I think this definitely falls within our tax abatement guidelines for residential. Does counsel have any questions? Okay. If not, entertain a motion to approve the tax abatement application.
So, move.
Moved by Revolinsky.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Next, counsel, we're going to set a public hearing for a portion of a sale for a portion of property. Mike, I'm gonna ask you to explain this, this one to the council, it's interesting.
Thank you, Mayor. So, in your package, you'll see an offer and acceptance, and probably the most useful page is a map that Rebecca Loper put together, that will be helpful in illustrating the particular portion of our parcel that we would be setting a public hearing to sell. And essentially, the landowner adjacent to our property, that you'll see outlined in yellow, the large yellow rectangle, added some, an addition onto his home, and he's went to sell that home, and that addition is sitting on our property. So, the, the property obviously cannot be sold because of title issues. Counselor Morrissey and I have worked with the property owner to negotiate what we feel is a fair price, to essentially carve out a portion of our land, that you'll see in the smaller triangle, just directly adjacent to his property. And that's roughly 24 by 61 feet, for the purchase price of $2,000. So, that would put him in conformance, and allow him to sell his property. He still wouldn't meet setback requirements, obviously, but it would allow him enough space to continue with the sale of his property, and allow us to still maintain our property for access to, for utility access and that type of thing. So, that is, in a nutshell, what the offer and acceptance in the council packet describes.
Thanks, Mike. So, we will be setting a public hearing on the sale of this parcel for July 27th, our next meeting. Entertain a motion to set that public hearing.
So, moved.
Moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Next, counsel, we also want to set a public hearing regarding the application with USDA Rural Development for financial assistance. Mike, I'm gonna ask you again, this is a pretty exciting opportunity that I think many council members will be hearing for the first time, so if you'd give us some background on this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. A week and a half ago, the city was approached by the U.S. Department of Agriculture and asked it if we had explored looking at potentially funding our wastewater improvement project through USDA. And my understanding is that the city had looked at it, but in the meantime, after the latest census, our median household income has changed in Fairfield, that now allows us to qualify for the program. So, essentially, the city of Fairfield is potentially eligible to receive up to 75% funding through the U.S. Department of Agriculture for our wastewater, both the plant upgrade and our conveyance system, step-one conveyance system. And I use the qualifier "up to," that's the maximum. We could receive, obviously, no grant funding. So, there are a couple stipulations that come along with this potential grant opportunity. One is that we are ready to go out to bid for step-one. Design is complete, the easements have been secured, we are ready to move forward with that project. However, we cannot go to bid on step-one if we intend to apply for this USDA grant opportunity. The minute we go to bid, we're precluded from applying to the federal government. So, that's a stipulation. The second stipulation is that to apply at the federal level, it requires significantly more environmental engineering work than what has been completed to satisfy the state SRF loan program. It's estimated that those engineering costs would be an additional $100,000 to $125,000 to meet the federal engineering, environmental engineering standards. So, that's the second catch. We would need to spend an additional $100,000, $125,000 for engineering at the possibility to acquire grant funding. The third stipulation is that we're looking at a minimum of a four-month approval process at the federal level. So, 120 days from the time that we apply before we have an answer. And again, I want to make sure, I preface with, it's sort of the minimum amount. Some of these projects can take up to two years. Now, the qualifier there is, we are significantly farther ahead in our process than other communities that apply. Typically, the application is made at very early stages of the game. We're significantly farther ahead, and USDA staff felt pretty comfortable that we'd be looking at that 120-day window. The fourth stipulation to consider is that any grant funding we receive, we have to borrow the equivalent amount at USDA at a slightly higher interest rate. So, that, that slightly higher interest rate looks about to be a half of a percent. And again, we're borrowing from USDA, so if we were to use some large numbers here and say, we acquired $12 million in grant funding, we would have to borrow $12 million from, from the federal government at a slightly higher interest rate. However, all of the funding that our, the state of Iowa give to the city of Fairfield for our special projects, the SRF grant funds, then becomes a question that would come back to the council. How do you want to proceed? At what level do you want to proceed with those special projects, now that we no longer would receive grant funding from the state of Iowa to move forward with those special projects? So, a lot to consider here.
There's also a 40-year...
Right, right. So, we would finance the project through USDA, our portion, what we don't receive in grant funds, if we were to receive grant funds, over a longer period of time, 10 additional years, which really more closely matches the lifespan of the system that we're building. We're really building a 40 to 50-year system at a minimum. And so, we sort of match that debt service to the life of the project versus the 30-year timeframe at SRF. So, a lot to consider. This has been in front of the Utilities Commission. Councilmember Hamilton, I'm not sure if you'd like to add anything additional from the Utility Committee standpoint?
Just a little more clarification is all I'd like to do, is the clean water SRF funding that allowed us to develop sponsored projects such as the parking lot at the Civic, or at the gym. Those would, in a sense, go away. We would have to figure out another way to pay for that parking lot. So, we also have projects that include work with farmers north of town, the drainage area. We had talked about cleaning up the drainage area north, so that it's not so bad when it gets here. We also talked about projects that would do stream bank stabilization along our trailhead down at Glasgow Road. Those are the projects that now we will have to find another way to fund it. We would have to borrow extra from the USDA, or borrowing that bond for it somehow, if we intended to do those kind of things. Our committee went through this, I've got a report later here, there's three items on that, but the one portion in my report specifically talked about this, and the committee itself is recommending that the council goes ahead and spends up to $125,000 from the utility fund right now, in order to make sure that we apply for this. Whether we get it or not, that's out there. But if, if we do get it, then we have a whole new batch of funding that we're gonna have to find money for in order to do these projects, because we, we cannot not do a parking lot at the, at the gym project, you know. We're in danger of losing a couple of bridges along that trailhead that I was talking about on Glasgow Road without stream bank stabilization. You know, we're, we just need to be able to find other money to do that. So, you know, this isn't an automatic thing, we're, we're still gonna have to have increases in, in utilities in order to pay for work that we've already done, and work we will continue to do. But it does change the dynamic of it. It won't automatically drop everybody's utility bill by a half if we get this, okay? So, we have to understand that as well.
But it could keep it from raising as high as it might otherwise, right?
There's, yeah.
Yeah.
Potentially.
Well, I think you have a couple of things working there. In a best-case scenario, up to 75% grant funding will heal a lot of wounds. And an extension of 10 years on the, on the payouts also will, you know, not demand that there's really all that much increase in the rate. So, in a best-case scenario, you could see a pretty significant, you know, decrease of what we're projecting now. We haven't even presented to the public what we're projecting now, but it's onerous. So, this, you know, pursuing this, we feel is, you know, our fiduciary responsibility to citizens as well, to see that we can get the, the most economical project. And there are ways, and with the sponsored projects, you know, we, we want to own the responsibility for that, but based on how successful we are, if we were to get a minimal amount of grant, if it's just in, in the, you know, small millions, three, four million or something like that, we're still going to need to go to SRF. And going to SRF is going to qualify us for those sponsored projects.
Just as, not as many.
So, there may be some mixed, right. So, it may be to mix and match, and if we, you know, if we take those responsibilities in-house, and we get up to $12 million in grants, then, you know, we're still doing something that's responsible. So, just taking it, Mike and I attended a meeting earlier this week with the USDA, you know, they've got a funding cycle that's ending now, that they, did you get any information today?
I did.
On whether, how much money there might be in that?
There wasn't an indication, the indication I got that there were some dollars...
Right.
Available this fiscal year, and sort of the recommendation was to take a split approach.
Right.
Apply for step-one this federal fiscal year, apply for the plant after October 1, to sort of maximize our chance at the two funding groups.
Yeah, the federal, the federal year would start October 1, so the second application could go in, you know, directly following that, so it probably, wouldn't be too, too bad. We're probably looking at six to eight months, but still a pretty, pretty decent opportunity that we were fortunate to qualify for, to see if we can, we can do it. Why don't we set the public hearing for the 27th at 7:00? Okay. So, a motion to set the public hearing on the 27th for the application process?
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin. Darren, you have another comment?
Yeah, I, I would like the council to confirm what the Utility Committee had said, that the council feels that they want to authorize this up to $125,000 amount.
Do you want to...
Not just set a public hearing to begin the grant process, because that is part of beginning the grant process. Federal government's gonna require more archaeology done out on the sites, they're also gonna require more reporting than what SRF requires on a state level here. So, there's also changes to our facilities plan for, out at, at the plant itself, and those expenses are in that $125,000. But that's more money than what the committee should be allowed to just authorize on their own, so we need to have the support of the full council to...
Sure. Are you, is that in your report later? I just want to...
Yes.
In terms of approving that, I want to make sure that's, it's been posted on the agenda.
Right, it's, it's here in the Utilities Committee notes.
Okay.
That action item required, vote by council.
Do you want to make that part of this motion, then, or do you want to take it as a second motion?
I would like to take it as a second motion before we set the public hearing, because what it's going to do is, it's gonna delay the current letting schedule that we've already got with our engineers.
Right.
We need to have them not do that any longer. And we need to proceed with all the associated costs to make this application up to $125,000, and it needs to be paid for from our existing utility fund.
Well, I think, let's go ahead and approve the, seek the approval for just the, the public hearing, because we're not really taking any action until the public hearing, and then secondarily, we'll take your motion to make that recommendation to approve the $125,000. So, we have that pre-approved going into the next meeting. So, we have a motion as second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? So, Darren, if you'll go ahead and make that motion, then?
I would like to make a motion that we delay the current letting schedule for our step-one and plant sewer projects, in order to complete engineering work needed to fill out our USDA grant application up to $125,000.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Hamilton, second by Hallie. Any discussion?
Just a reminder that $125,000 might seem like a lot of money, but in the scheme of the size of this project, about $30 million project?
Yeah, between step-one and the plant, you're talking 27 million.
And the potential savings to utility users, which is all of us, it's not that much to spend.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. Any other discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, counsel, we have a warning of a contract for Monroe Van Buren Cromwell Water. I'll ask Matt Walker from French Riker to talk to us about the bids that we have in front of us.
Do you guys have a copy of the...
Yes, we do, uh-huh. If you'll read out the engineer's estimate and the three.
So, earlier this week, we opened bids, and before you, for the project, there were, there were four bidders. The engineer's estimate was $118,500. Drish construction was the low bid at $96,535. Next came in cross-iron excavating at 114,045, followed by MB Construction at 139,526. And the fourth bid was Lawson Construction out of Kirksville, Missouri at 183,745. So, we would recommend awarding to the lowest responsive bid of Drish Construction.
Okay, thank you, Matt. We want to thank all the other companies that did submit bids for this project. They have a recommendation to accept the Drish Construction bid of $96,535.
Move to accept?
Move to, move by Hammers.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you, Matt. Let's see. Next, we have an action item for Third Street Reconstruction Project. Is Darrell or Matt, do you have a discussion on that?
I'm right here.
Yeah, go ahead.
I can take that, too.
Thanks.
So, remember previously, Third Street had the sanitary sewer removed underneath of it, so this project is going to remove the rest of the paving, and then, obviously, repave it. This was bid in two alternates, pavement, so PCC, and then followed by an HMA for asphalt. The engineer's estimate was 219,500, and Shipley was the low bid at 184,106,50, followed by Jones Contracting, which was 277,777. And alternate two, which was the HMA option, Norris Asphalt Paving out of Atumla submitted a bid of 257,602. So, we would recommend awarding to Shipley Contracting Corp.
Okay, again, we want to thank the other companies that competed in this. We have a recommendation to award it to Shipley. Just a question. Sure. There's two alternates, I'm, I'm sorry. So, this is just the first alternate we're talking about?
What we did was, we bid at two different materials. You bid with asphalt versus concrete, and then you compare the low bid between the two.
And so, the low bid was for the concrete?
Was for concrete, correct, yes.
That's, that's interesting.
It's not surprising.
It's been that way typically for the last, I think, four or five years.
Price of oil. Yeah, the price of oil's down, you'd think asphalt would be cheaper.
There's a lot more paving contractors around, whereas, you know, asphalt, really, it's only Norris out of Atumla that kind of serves this area, so it's just a...
It's a disincentive bid?
It's a hard, you know, just being the distance over, it just gets to be hard for the asphalt to really be competitive, so...
Okay. So, is there a motion to approve the Shipley bid?
Yeah, move approved.
Moved by Revolinsky?
Second.
Second by Hammers. Any discussion? Not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you, Matt. Why don't you stay right there? Our next two items, which are council resolutions to vacate easements on Lot Two, is going to be tabled for this evening, so we will not be taking that. We'll move then to our action item, which is approval of appraisers for step-two.
So, what we did was, we sent out an RFQ to certain appraisers around the area, to go ahead and evaluate the step-two easements. So, we then sent them to CG, JCG Land Services, and they came back with a recommendation that you guys see before you tonight. Just one thing we wanted to point out is, although we're approving these, or we're recommending approval tonight, the process probably won't start for a couple more months. Melanie's thinking of a public hearing in September. And the other thing she wanted to mention was that the easement acquisition process and the appraisal process is the same thing for SRF or RD, so it's not like you'll have more work to do later if you ultimately change to the RD route. route. It's, it's the same, you know, both process, both grants and loan fundings use essentially the same process. There's no worry to, you know, do duplicate work or anything like that.
And Mayor, if I may just jump in. Counsel, you have not approved taking Step 2 through the rural development process. Right now, that is the plant and Step 1. We will likely approach you at a later time this fall for Step 2 going through the rural development process. So right now, you've just approved Step 1 of the plant, just to be clear.
Thank you, Mike.
Rural development means what?
That is the component of the U.S. Department of Agriculture that has the funding mechanism for the water, wastewater improvement program for municipalities.
Oh, I see. Okay, I understand. Too many acronyms.
Counsel then entertain a motion to approve the appraisal recommendation.
So move.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Who was that? I'm sorry.
Either one of us.
Tony, second by Hammers. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Okay, next, council, we, Mike, if you'll tell us what we're doing in this step for determining the necessity of fixing date for a public hearing on the adoption of proposed amendment number one to our commercial industrial urban revitalization plan. I know we've got some annexation issues coming up next.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Economic Development Committee met and authorized city staff to work with Hallers and Cooney to bring before the council an amendment to our revitalization ordinance or plan. And essentially, at a high level, what that amendment looks like is that our current plan places a cap that properties annexed into the city after 2012 are not eligible for our revitalization program or our renewal program. So this amendment would remove that cap. And basically, any land annexed into the city heretofore is now eligible for our revitalization to participate in our abatement, tax abatement program. It also removes the cap. We're seeing some of the projects come through that are applying for the Iowa Workforce Housing Development Tax Credit. There is language in our revitalization program that excludes them from participating in our program if they are also participating in another grant, program, a tax subsidy program. So those are the two amendments essentially that we'll see in the revitalization amendment. And that, tonight, we're simply fixing a hearing to discuss that amendment on July 27.
And July 27 will be the time for that hearing. So entertain a motion to set the public hearing.
So move.
Moved by Hallie.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Okay, thank you. Next, council, we have approval of a land acquisition. John Morrissey here. John, would you speak to the council regarding this property? Thanks.
Now, this looks like a lot of resolution for something. You're going to pay $250. But it is, it's probably the model you're going to see seven or eight dozen times over the next several months. Most of your easement acquisition that's going to take place on the next stage of construction of your main going north from the plant site is going to be smaller easements of value less than $10,000. And this is kind of a kickoff for a staging area that the Holt family entity is agreeing to afford you some additional access, basically, which will be part of staging for a temporary period. And that's all you're buying in this. But your, your resolution is going to look a little different than the ones you've been seeing when we've been spending tens of thousands of dollars or hundreds of thousands of dollars to buy things from people by deed or in fee simple. And so you can anticipate seeing this again and again. Your second page of the resolution down where you authorized the city's retained acquisition agent to proceed makes reference about midway through that paragraph to alternatively, as permitted by statute and by Fairfield City Resolution that you adopted a year ago to establish a just compensation estimate for acquisition of low market value property interest of $10,000 or less and further authorized Mike Adams and JCG and myself to proceed to do this form of acquisition. You're going to see that again and again on these resolutions as they came up or as they come up in the future. And essentially, that's carried out into the language above the now therefore be it resolved paragraph right before that talks about that alternate method of valuation again. What will happen, and you'll see it sometimes attached to these, once your city administrator, under your resolution, and whoever the acquisition agent is, it won't always be Mike Adams' name showing up, but one of the JCG acquisition people, sit down and they look at the factors determining that it's a value less than $10,000, which will probably have something to do with assessment information, probably have something to do with other things they've been able to do in the neighborhood, and they create a little grid. Mike Harmon and your JCG guy or girl will sign off on an estimation of just compensation. That will then be referenced as though it were an appraisal, and there will be an offer of just compensation extended to the owner. We'll proceed the rest of the way, similar to what you're used to as far as good faith negotiation. And then we'll bring you back a resolution, assuming that negotiation is successful in getting this. That's about the only variation in the way things will work at the startup on these values. So you get an example of the first of many resolutions. And we'd appreciate it if you'd just go ahead and let us do this. We need it for where we're at down by the area north of the plant right now to have a staging area. And that's all this is about, so.
Okay.
Anything you want to add, Mike?
No.
Okay.
Very good. So, council, good we have a little dry run at $250. So entertain a motion to approve the land acquisition from HFF LLC.
Move to approve.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Next, council, we have two annexation resolutions. The first will be property along 227th Street. It is coming to you, recommended from Planning and Zoning, that this be annexed into the city of Fairfield. So I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution for annexation.
So move.
Moved by Revolinsky.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kalin. Any discussion? Or any comments, Mike, for this piece?
I would like to abstain from this as the property is along 227th, which fronts the Iowa Department of Transportation.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Next, council, the annexation of property along Libertyville Road, again, coming as a recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission. Entertain a motion to approve the request for annexation.
Move for approve.
Okay, moved by Revolinsky, second by Hammers. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Now, council, we'll move towards rezoning both of these properties. As you know, when we do annex, everything does come in as R1. The requested rezoning for the property along 227th Street will be to M2 General Manufacturing. This will be the first reading of an ordinance to change this. Entertain, first of all, we'll open a public hearing on this and ask if there are any comments. Seeing no comments, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to pass this from the first to the second reading in changing the zoning of this property.
So moved.
Moved by Hammers.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kalin. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign.
I will abstain as it is a frontage road to the Department of Transportation.
Thank you. Next, council, the first reading of ordinance to rezone Libertyville Road from R1 single-family to R3 multifamily residential district. And this is also a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing for any comment. Seeing no public comment, we'll close the public hearing and ask to move this from the first and the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Hallie, second by Hammers. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Next, council, we have the third and final reading for amended permitted burn, burn times. Any, any comments that the council has received or City Hall regarding this ordinance over the last two weeks? This is public hearing. We'll open that, ask if there's any public comment. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask for this to be moved from the third to the final, third and final reading.
So moved.
Moved by Hammers.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kalin. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. The council will move then down to our committee and board reports, Property Committee. Does there a report?
Well, property did meet. And I guess several of the issues, thanks to Mike, I think one of them has been deferred to him, which we discussed the Macy situation in terms of John Macy and the sale of the city property. So we covered that. We did have a request for information regarding home occupation regulations, and we decided to leave the ordinance as it stands now. We felt that it would be difficult to enforce any changes, and we decided to leave things as they exist. We also had a request from a homeowner who was upset about plantings that were adjacent to her property, but we reassured her that they actually are not on her property. And unless they infringe, you cannot decide to remove someone else's trees. You may not like them, but they may, will stay there at least until that time. We also had a request from FIDA regarding a billboard on 227th Street, which we felt would, needed to be approved as far as property was concerned, but it would be needing to go to Planning and Zoning to continue it from there. We also covered the Carnegie Museum Agreement, which I think I will defer to Mike to discuss the fact of what we had to do, what we had, have worked, he has worked out with Indian Hills regarding the use of Carnegie.
Thank you, Councilmember Robinson. So we, basically, Indian Hills came to the city and asked us to take a fresh look at that lease because of, the Carnegie Museum is taking up additional space in the basement that used to be classrooms Indian Hills used for space. So currently, Indian Hills, under our current contract, is paying two-thirds of the utility bills in that particular facility. And we have a 50-50 maintenance agreement with him for larger expenditures over $5,000. They ask us to take a look at that arrangement because we are occupying a larger footprint. Essentially, our footprint now is two-thirds of the building, and their footprint is one-third. So we have been in negotiations with Indian Hills. I think we're very close to a contract ready for this council's approval. John has looked at it, and we're working out a couple of those small details. We hope to have something to bring back to you on council meeting at July 27. Yes, council?
Is there some reason they don't pay any rent?
So that arrangement has been since the early 90s, my understanding. And as a community service gesture, the city's worked out an agreement with Indian Hills that they pay for a majority of the utilities and most of the maintenance, and we occupy the third floor as sort of a 280 agreement with Indian Hills.
And because of the fact that, you know, they now, we are now occupying the lower level.
It's our building they're using for free. I mean, they should pay all the utilities.
That, well, I mean, it really has been a desirable arrangement for.
Well, then we'd have to record the music.
I mean, it's been very desirable. But I think, as I say, I can understand.
I think we, we felt that at the time, you know, the museum certainly wasn't in a position to, you know, that that, that expense for the entire building would have been on the city. I think that having the building occupied fully helps the longevity of the building alone, just that there is heat cooling in there during, during the year. And the fact that they were, that they were willing to provide that was.
I, I will apologize. I'm on this committee, and I missed it. But one input that I would have, and maybe it's something that we need to look at ways and means, but, you know, simply because the museum decided they need extra space, suddenly now that's going to cost the decrease in amount of utilities we're going to get from Indian Hills if we, if we go through with this contract, which means de facto we're paying more money for our museum without even thinking about it, without considering it. So I think, you know, what you need to really see is maybe they can have some other space somewhere, you know, and not use that space. If that's really an issue of taking away classrooms from Indian Hills and therefore rent and maintenance expenses that they're paying.
Well, they were, yeah, Indian Hills was still, they were, they were still paying for the, for the utilities for the entire building. They weren't using that classroom building in the downstairs that became available. Museum, I think they were interested in using it for the 175th special exhibit. I think it's just, it's continued because they do have so much material. It's a, it's a fair point to, you know, ask the museum board. But, so what's the proposal? What's, what is the, where do you think we're going with the, the split now?
The proposal is that currently at two-thirds city, one-third Indian Hills, specifically referencing the utility portion of the building.
And it's been how much?
The opposite.
They've been paying.
Two-thirds Indian Hills, one-third city.
Significantly, we're going to be paying for.
We're talking about the city writing a check to Indian Hills for 15, approximately $1,500 a year.
$1,500?
That's not what we're talking about.
I think, I think it's really an opportunity, I mean, to have Indian Hills there. I mean, we need them very badly. I mean, the community needs them, as well as the fact that I think the city and the building needs them.
What's the line item for the, for the museum budget for utilities?
I would have to look specifically at that.
I was curious if it, yeah, if it's been matching about a third or whether, yeah. Okay.
So, yeah. The other item that actually property covered was, which again, I will defer to Mike because he's been negotiating with it, he and Adam, but the sale of the 102 South 23rd Street. And I think you can probably tell because we had an offer for that building.
Correct. Thank you, councilmember. The city did receive an unsolicited offer from a local business owner. He currently has a business established in the city looking to expand and grow his business. The offer was for substantially less than our appraisal price. The offer was submitted to the property committee, and they recommended to move ahead and accept his offer, obviously because of state law and essentially the city cannot give an individual a gift. And because there's a gap in what his offer is in that appraisal price, auditors often look at that as a gift to a private party. So Counselor Morrissey and I are working on a development agreement with some language that will put some stipulations into what he must do to that building and job creation and so on and so forth that we would like to bring back to the council at a future time.
Okay, very good. And we don't want to just discuss the offer at this point or just curiosity?
So at this point, I guess, you know, everything is kind of like.
Better not to do that in public. Okay.
Right. That's kind of, property was sort of in several areas, let's just say.
All right, good.
And we'll be in several again.
That is encouraging. I think, I think just about, I think that everybody in the council would agree, we were kind of flabbergasted that the property got that $100,000 appraisal in the first place.
Right, for $25,000.
I think if we have all our ducks in a row, we'd probably be happy to, to sell the property. We could always wait for that to come back.
We could always get a new appraisal, too. I mean, they could pay for a new appraisal if they wanted to facilitate their sale.
They could.
John doesn't think it's necessary, yeah.
I don't think you need to do that, but I think we'll wait.
We'll be okay.
Do it for development.
Okay, thank you. Is that everything, Martha?
That's everything. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Next, we'll take our Water Sewer Utilities Committee.
All right, we had three items, the largest of which we already have taken up with the possibility of the USDA grant loan application. We had two other items. Citizen Noel Howard brought to the committee a suggestion that the city provide as a reseller through the water bill, insurance for homeowners for unexpected costs associated with water and sewer line work. This was brought forward by her because there was. This was brought forward by her because there was a recent scam that had gone around the city about buy insurance from us and we'll take care of you if you have problems with your water or sewer, and it was not a legitimate outfit that was putting out this information. And it put some distrust out there in people about whether they would buy insurance from somewhere about it. Our administrator did take the initiative, and he found that there is a, there are multiple companies out there that do this type of insurance directly to a homeowner at a reduced price from what the city could ever do it for. So the question kept coming back to what benefit would the utility customers gain by buying a policy from the city that is already available on the open market for less? And we really couldn't come up with anything that would make that a viable option as far as I was concerned. The committee didn't really take any action on it. I am yet to call the city of Des Moines. They do this type of program, but they are a reseller. They don't initiate the insurance themselves, similar to a TUMBL, they are also a reseller, which means we have to mark it up for what paperwork we have to do and take care of here at the office and keep track of. So there is a cost associated with that through the water office, through the utility office. And so we need to, if the city was to actually look at this, this would be an upcharge. And right now, policies go for about $9, $10 a month, something in that in the neighborhood. Other cities are charging $12 to $14 a month through the water bill for that, for the, through the utility bill. That's a mistake. So we haven't taken any action on that, but I wanted to report that to the council, that that was something that has been discussed and will be looked in further. We also looked at a multi-year rate increase ordinance, but we've tabled that to a future date because we need to rerun numbers prior to finding out whether we will or will not get USDA funding. If we don't, we need that as a guarantee for some of our clean water, SRF funding. It will also be useful in funding guarantees for loans that come from the USDA that aren't covered by the grant. So no action was taken on that at this time because the item was tabled.
Thank you for your report. Next Ways and Means Committee.
Yes, we did have a Ways and Means meeting just before this meeting, and we reviewed the financial policy. This is our third take on it. We finally made it through the whole thing, and quite a lot of discussion on many of the points. We're very eager for the rest of the council to take a look at it and also weigh in. Mike's going to be sharing with everyone over the next short, in the short term here, and we want to make sure we, you know, point out anything in there that's going to, that's a change in our policy, that we're all, you know, on the same page with it. Any more comments that you want to say now about it, Mike? We had also discussed at press, Mike would offer to meet with some of the council people who are not on the Ways and Means Committee individually or two-by-two or whatever, to not have a public meeting on it, but just simply for information if you're interested. Mike could probably be willing to do that. We also want to get input, of course, on our, from our department heads on it before we actually finalize the policy, because most of it has to do with how the department heads function and, you know, in connection with Mike. So that was a big achievement to finish that. The next thing is what we had talked about was our allocations for local option sales tax. This has been something that's been before the council several times since Kevin was here. He was a big supporter of, a big proponent of that we put it to the electorate about reallocating our lost funds. There was an issue that had came up that, you know, one of the main things, kind of the thing that we wanted to decouple perhaps in the new election would be whether or not we still needed to have 25% of our lost money going towards sewer. And doing some research on it, Darren came back and found that actually, the new sewer rates that we have projected and that we've already enacted do not take into account the revenue that we would gain from lost, and so that it would basically not have an effect on our sewer rates if we did not give the sewer department that extra money every year from lost, the 25%. And so there was some feeling that it would be good to make that available for other things in the city. One of the main things is to, you know, shore up our fund balance, which is something that we're going to deal with in our financial policy and very important with our bond rating as well. Our, not bond rating, our, is it bond rating? Yeah. And so fund balance, and then just in general, property tax relief. And so we came up with some different proposals on how to word this, and Mike's going to be taking it to the attorneys and maybe coming back, probably next council meeting with something for the whole council to discuss in full session, because we need to decide on this, to move it ahead if we actually want to get in on the ballot in November, which would be to our benefit, so we don't have to pay for an extra election. So that's a report from Ways and Means.
Okay. Thank you, John. Just to add that I know there's been a lot of preparation on the policy, and this is, I think, going to be a great platform for us to have all of this financial discussions at every corner of the city and how we develop our budgets and what, you know, what department heads are responsible for and responsible to. So it's great that we've gotten through this, and I encourage the rest of, the remainder of the council to read it as quickly as possible so that we can get it established, but at the same time, take advantage of some time with Mike where he can really hit some of those high points of how it is going to strengthen the city financially. Thank you for the report, and next we'll move to Public Safety and Transportation Committee.
We also met tonight. We discussed with Jason from Apple Henry House, his signed proposal and approved signs that we discussed at our last meeting. They're going to start with four signs, one on each end of the eight spaces with the arrow between the two signs for Saturday only when they need it. If they need more signs, it doesn't work, they'll add another sign on each side and so on. We did approve signs tonight. We also discussed again the alcohol server training ordinance and made some more changes to that, and that's not completed yet, so that'll come back again.
Okay, thanks, Tony. You remind me, at our last meeting, we approved it pending so that we don't need to take any action on the signs. Great, thank you. Thank you for your report. Mike, do you have anything to report to the council?
Just one item, Mayor. In our construction meeting for the airport, it appears the demolition should occur likely by the next time this group comes together, so you'll see our airport terminal be tore down, and Bob will move some temporary RVs out there for just a resting place for pilots and some, you know, general facilities that they may need in there when they stop. So pretty exciting project, and we'll see some big changes out there in the next couple of weeks.
All right, thank you very much. Before we do adjourn, I do want to point out that July 4 was a clear sunny, sunny day and a clear night.
The fireworks are great.
And we want to thank Fire Chief Scott Vaughn and the Fairfield Fire Department for their execution. Want to thank Councilman Michael Hallie for putting together some of the other activities that took place that day. I think it was a record crowd out there, it was a great night, and it was in the spirit of 175 years, just 360 some odd days later.
Thanks also to Chief Thomas and his wife and another officer for helping with the parking. They kind of came in last minute and saved the day on that.
Great, thank you, Chief. We appreciate it. Would entertain a motion to adjourn?
Moved to adjourn.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kalin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Meeting adjourned.